Morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, May 8, 2025. We're here for a work session. If we could all please stand for the pledge and Councilman Hoffa, would you mind leading us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to start off with open session today. First item up is matters surrounding the special permit and site plan for National Grid Facility located at 8 Mill Road, and that will be with Greg Bergman. And we have the good folks from National Grid, if you'd like to come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Supervisor, members of board for the applicant, Brian Kennedy. I'm a partner with Fortelli Dean and Toronto.
I'm Fred Pollard, project manager at National Grid. I send you a letter every single month, really a payment, but you never respond back.
You have to do the same thing.
They provide service, right?
Good morning, everybody. So what we've got before the board today is a special permit, and there's also a site plan application pending before the planning board. It's proposing site improvements at the National Grid Facility located on 8 Mill Road, which is just north of the intersection of Mill Road and West Main Street. The application includes the demolition of two existing onsite buildings, certain utility structures, the widening of the existing access driveway apron on Mill Road, the creation of trailer parking spaces for a total of 24 compressed natural gas trucks, and the installation of related CIG distribution and collection equipment. The property is located in the Peconic River Community or the PRC zoning use district. Pursuant to town code, utility providers and utility sites are allowed by special permit within any zoning district by special permission of the town board. So that's why they're before the board for this site. The action is an unlisted action pursuant to secret with coordinator review being optional and not recommended. I did prepare a short EAF, parts two and three dated April 28th, which the board has in a resolution packet which we will be considering. We've reviewed the project and do not anticipate there to be any significant negative environmental impacts from the project, so we do recommend a negative declaration. The property is encumbered by two easements, one that's worthy of noting and will come up a little bit later. There is a 30-foot access easement which is located on the south side of this property. It's not shown on the survey, but it does exist. The purpose of that right-of-way is to provide access to the property located directly to the east, as that is a landlocked parcel.
Correct.
And there's also an easement on the property that reserves approximately 5,500 square feet for, it was the Long Island Light Lighting Company, now LILCO, allows them to operate and maintain an electric transmission distribution facility. So I do recommend that just when we get the final site plan, we do show both of those easement areas on the plan. Now, there is a sort of big ask that I understand, and it's in the staff report. The location of that right-of-way, and again, when that was created back in, I believe it was like the '40s or the '50s, there was probably no future thought of what this area would become. The location of that 30-foot right-of-way sort of dumps out any potential traffic from that site right into the middle of the intersection. It's sort of in the middle, there's no like traffic signals, there's no real control measures. So if it's possible, I understand it's a big ask, maybe we can relocate that right-of-way to sort of meet up outside their fence line, just to provide, you know, reduce any potential future conflicting traffic movements.
Just clarify, is there right-of-way or are they adjacent parcels right-of-way?
This is on page three, right?
Correct, yeah. So on page three on figure two, that it's probably located, you know, 30 foot from the southern property boundary. That fence line in figure two, just to the right of that, in that red area, that's the location of that right-of-way.
But that's somebody else's property.
It's their property, their property is encumbered with the right-of-way to access the property located to the east. Again, whether or not it's feasible at this juncture, I understand it's an ask, but I just, you know, looking into the crystal ball a little bit, if there was any potential development, that site is zoned light industrial, so there could be some type of development back there.
That landlocked piece factor has been looked at for best in the past, hasn't it?
Correct. Haven't heard anything else in, you know, a number of years on it, but, I mean, again, light industrial does allow some type of, you know, commercial development. So again, just trying to look forward, you know, get ahead of any potential issues.
So what would be your suggestion on the easement?
So, I mean, if it's possible, and again, there are fence lines, and I understand the conversations with the applicant, that there are regulatory systems for the natural gas lines within this area.
And within the easement area, right?
So that, we have that easement because we, there's a main that runs down that piece. Right now, again, it is undeveloped, so the neighbor that we're in touch with almost never uses the access. Right now, you'll see in the corner where the driveway comes down to the south, we do have equipment in that corner of the fence. You can see some things above ground right behind the fence there.
Yes.
In the coming years, we are looking to upgrade that station. It's a vintage '50s station, so I'm thinking about three years from now. And so we're in that active design right now, and I've already mentioned that to the engineers, and we're going to see what we can do to remove the equipment from that corner, so that in the future, we can blend those driveways.
But that would likely be a subsequent application. As part of this, I don't know that we can meet the town's request.
Right. And I understand that. Again, what I would possibly envision, you know, I mean, I understand they will have fencing and security, but, you know, if that right-of-way could sort of be relocated to meet up with this driveway, just to provide one curb cut.
Much safer, yeah. And it makes sense for both boards.
So the nature of the use is somewhat temporary. The purpose of this is to, is my understanding, during really cold days in the winter, you know, we're talking when it gets down to like 10, 20. Due to the carrying capacity of National Grid out here, they need to supplement the system. So on those really cold days, they'll get trucks, they come in from out of state, they'll sort of stage them here, and they use them to supplement the existing National Grid system to, you know, provide additional gas capacity, to make sure people can heat their homes. It is by no means a permanent storage facility, these trucks would not be there on a permanent basis. That was one concern, so the fire marshal did review it. He had no comments. There is a hydrant located right in the Mill Road right-of-way. That will need to be relocated, but there were no significant fire concerns or fire safety. He did just have some comments regarding emergency access. There is a electric sliding gate here that's security card controlled. He just had comments that in the event of an emergency, they need to have some type of emergency access for the fire department to respond to any potential emergency. There's some minor revisions that need to be done to the lighting plan. Currently, they propose 20-foot mounting height LED fixtures with a color temperature of 5,000 degrees Kelvin. Those need to be revised to 16-foot height and a maximum color temperature of 3,000. Again, that's not a real significant change. They will be demolishing two of the buildings onsite, one will remain. One of them has a bathroom, so they will need to locate that sanitary system and abandon that in accordance with health department requirements. Again, did get comments from the water district, so the hydrant is basically right in the middle of where the proposed driveway widening will take place. They can relocate that hydrant, that needs to be done in accordance with the water district. It still needs to remain on that side of the road. We got comments back from the highway department. He actually just paved this section of Mill Road, so he's just looking for a full restoration of the pavement in Mill Road, curb to curb, as a result of the widening of the curb cut. Now, the property is located within New York State DEC Wild Scenic and Recreational Rivers area, it's in the community designation pursuant to six NYCRR, part 666.13H, one and two. There is no permit required from the DEC for this because it is a utility provider. So I do have two resolutions before the board. I know there is a special town board meeting scheduled for after this work session to issue a negative declaration and schedule the public hearing. The public hearing for this application will be scheduled for May 21st.
Okay. And the reason we pushed it up to do it today with a special meeting is because you have a much larger project that's going to take place, and you need to finish this up, get this done and completed before you can go on to the other projects, so that's the sense of urgency here.
That is completely accurate. If you guys recall, we first met with planning and some members of this board almost two years ago. We have gone through this plan several times. A larger project in a neighboring township is set to begin in January. This site needs to be open and operational for that project to begin. And all of the comments that Mr. Bergman made in his planning memo, the applicant has no issue meeting all of those, except for the easement area, which we will revisit when the time comes. The one thing I'll note is this site will be only operational from December to February, the coldest months of the year.
And if Mother Nature's kind to us, it may not have to operate at all.
That's correct.
There any other questions? Anything else for the board?
No.
Pretty cut and dry.
Yep. Thank you. I have to thank you all, and thank Mr. Bergman for his hard work on this. He's done an incredible job. I really appreciate it.
Great, great job, Greg.
We appreciate it here and now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job with this. Very, very nice.
Okay, next up, we have matters surrounding comments received regarding Island Water Park during the CND comment period and the next steps with Greg Bergman.
Thank you. All right, so as the board is obviously well aware, the resolution 2025-234 dated March 4th of 2025, the town board issued a conditional negative declaration or a CND for the site plan application of Island Water Park, which sought to legalize improvements made to the existing site, including the construction of a go-kart track, pickleball courts, and conversion of the use of an interior existing space for use as catering space. The notice of the CND was posted in the New York State DEC's Environmental News Bulletin on March 19th, 2025. Once that was posted, pursuant to secret, it commenced a 30-day public comment period. That comment period then ended on, I believe it was April 19th. We did receive three comment letters from members of the public during that time period. We received one letter from Barbara Blast dated March 31st, one letter from Jen Hartnagle on behalf of the group for the East End dated March 17th, 2025, and a second follow-up letter from Barbara Blast dated April 11th, 2025. So pursuant to secret, a lead agency is required to review all comments received during the public comment period to determine if they raised substantive issues and are relevant to the adequacy of the condition negative declaration. So attached to the report, I did attach copies of those three letters. I tried to go through them and distill down for the board what I felt were the substantive comments, so I'll go through them. We can have a discussion to see if the board agrees, or if there's anything else that they'd like to address. So comment one from Ms. Blast's letter dated April 11th spoke about the environment, the review, and adequately identified and evaluated noise from the go-karts and the potential impacts on birds and other species in the grassland and woodlands proximate to the track. The New York State DEC identified April 23rd through August 15th as bird breeding and nesting season, during which certain activities are restricted. Should the CND conditions be modified to restrict the operation of gas-powered go-karts during this period? Should the CND be modified to include a noise barrier or require electric go-karts in the alternative? So there is a New York State DEC manual, it's available online, it's called the Strategy for Grassland Bird Habitat Management and Conservation for the years 2022 through 2027. That manual, although it did not identify any targeted grassland bird conservation centers in the vicinity of the project site, I do acknowledge that there are grassland habitats that were identified in the June 13th, 2014 Habitat Protection Plan for EPCAL, and those are generally located in the vicinity of the runways around EPCAL. One important thing to note is that all the prior studies for the EPCAL subdivisions that the towns looked at did acknowledge that in the absence of mowing of those areas, they would become successional and sort of that birdland habitat, that grassland habitat would eventually be lost in the absence of mowing. So the proximity from the track to the nearest part of those grassland habitats is approximately 1,150 feet. Given the separation distance, the fact that there is significant wooded buffers between those areas, not necessarily anticipating significant results to those habitats. Further, we did coordinate with the DEC during the secret coordination period, and they had no comments to that effect on, you know, effects of the grassland bird habitats. The comment two from Jen Hartnagle's letter from the group for the East End dated March 17th spoke about the inclusion of the requirements for the Suffolk County Department of Health Services Office of Waste Water Management, stating that the lead agency cannot require as a condition an approval from another agency because it is not a mitigative measure. It states that the CND cannot be used to create an approval authority for an agency that has no established jurisdiction over the proposed action. Do acknowledge this comment, although it does not speak to any specific mitigation measure within that CND. The town board as a lead agency cannot rely on that to attach conditions that are within the lead agency's underlying jurisdiction, or conditions that an applicant is otherwise legally obligated to meet in order to obtain a permit or approval, such as emission or discharge standards as required by law. So I do recommend that the CND be modified to remove those two conditions, as one about the health department and there's one about the DEC, as those are reflectively conditions that the applicant is legally required to meet anyway. So again, it doesn't necessarily speak to any specific mitigation measure within the CND. Nonetheless, the minor revision to remove those two conditions does not require additional posting in the ENB, it does not require an additional 30-day review period or anything. The only time we'd have to do additional review is if you were to add conditions that were not previously identified. And again, the comment three from Barbara Blast identified same kind of conditions about attaching those conditions about DEC and the health department. There were other comments, and both letters spoke to them, both Jen Hartnagle's letter and Barbara Blast's March 31st letter. They both made general reference to the secret process, specifically the unlisted classification of the proposed action citing Riverhead Town Code Section 225-11B5 as a compelling factor that requires it to be classified as a type one action. So town code 225-11B5 states that parking facilities or facilities with an associated parking area with a total number of parking spaces is 50 or greater are considered type one actions. We've had conversations with this on a planning level, going back to Dick Ellers. That section of code was never intended to capture any action on a facility with 50 or more parking spaces. It was intended to capture the construction of new facilities of 50 or more parking stalls. You know, by that logic, any action, you know, if a major shopping center on 58 were to come in for facade improvements, that would be, that would be a type one action by a strict reading of that. That was never intended to be the action. So I stick by the unlisted classification of the action. I mean, we're talking about the construction of a go-kart track, pickleball courts, and arguably, the conversion of the interior space for use as catering is conversion, you know, it's, it's a permitted use within the zoning district, that action in and of itself, it sort of got lumped in when the fire marshal issued tickets and code enforcement was out there. That in and of itself wouldn't necessarily have even required the site plan approval. But nonetheless, I'm sticking by the unlisted classification. I do not feel or do not recommend to the board that that needs to be amended. So the next steps per the secret handbook, if comments are received that suggest improvements to an already adequate mitigation measure or better way to mitigate the impact, the lead agency has the discretion to make minor adjustments to the CND. The type of minor revisions to address comments that will strengthen an already adequate mitigation measure would not require the lead agency to go through the CND process again or require the preparation of a draft EIS. Lead agency may, as indicated in the first option in the secret handbook, choose to respond to the comments by stating that the revision was made to the CND. So I do recommend the town board, I have not prepared a resolution yet, but I would recommend prepare a resolution, accept the staff report, and the comments contained herein as constituted the board's responses to the comments on the CND, and acknowledge that the removal of the Department of Health and the DEC requirements be removed from that DEC. Again, although those two comments are not specific to any type of mitigation and do not necessarily strengthen that mitigation measure, they should be removed as the applicant is already legally required to obtain those approvals.
Greg, going back to town code 225-11B5 with the 50 spaces, should we look at that town code and maybe word it?
I think we're going to. I spoke about that with Matt, just to remove any confusion, because again, we're talking about-
It seems a little ambiguous and-
Yeah. I specifically remember there was a, I think it was the Target Shopping Center or the Dollar Tree Shopping Center next to Target, when that was being renovated, Karen Gluth, I remember, raised that question, and I remember the conversation with Dick Ellers, and he said, you know, "That's not what it was intended for."
Okay.
So going through the other comments, and the board have any other comments on the letters or the responses, anything else we'd like to look at?
No, they covered it quite well.
I think they did a great job addressing it.
All right. Very good, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Next up, we have matters surrounding an update on committees from the board, and who would like to begin?
I'll go.
Okay, Joe.
Okay. So I have anti-litter, and I am very happy to report that our spring cleanup was this past Saturday, and it was a great success. Thank you to all of the dedicated volunteers that came out and donated their time and energy to help keep our community clean and beautiful, and we are already beginning to talk about our fall cleanup, so more to come on that. Beach committee, your stickers for beach, for the beaches are available here at Town Hall. This Saturday, there will be the last drive-through where you can come here to Town Hall. You don't have to get out of your car, there'll be someone outside, and the time for that is between 11:00 and 2:00. And just remember, you must have a beach sticker in order to park at the beaches. This is all year long, not just the summer season. Business Improvement District, the bid by executive board announced a few weeks ago that they have released their executive director, Kristy Verity. We wish her well on all of her future endeavors, and the bid will be focusing on various projects throughout downtown. They have some great ideas, and I think that you're going to see some great things happening downtown. And I'm happy to reiterate that AliveOn25 is still going to go on. We have some awesome things planned for it, and the dates are July 18th, and we'll have fireworks that night, and the second one is August 1st. And the Halloween Fest will also be going on in October, so I'm really looking forward to that. Board of Assessment Review, Tax Grievance Day is Tuesday, May 20th, here at Town Hall. The review board will meet between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and noon, and then 6:00 p.m. until 8:00. And our regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Wednesday instead of Tuesday so that the assessment board is able to use this room. Code Revision, I don't really have too much to talk about with code revision. I just became liaison in January, and I really appreciate the amount of work that goes into looking at the code to make sure that, you know, the, that everything remains clear, consistent, you know, that are, there's no gray lines in our code, and they're really, they're doing a great job, and I'm really happy to be a part of that. Farmland Preservation, I am happy to report that we just passed last week two resolutions to bring on two new members. We have Eve Kaplan and Matt Wells. So along with the addition of Kenny Zolnicki a few months ago, our farmland committee is strong and moving forward, and I really appreciate Richard Wines and Matt Schmidt being able to bring in new members, so I'm looking forward to moving forward with that. And Personnel Committee, well, that's not a committee.
No.
No, never mind. I was just going to say that everybody should go, if you're looking for a career opportunity, go and take the civil service test. We are hiring here in Riverhead, and it's an excellent opportunity, it's a great place to work, and, you know, you're missing, you're missing out. Go take that test. That's all that I have.
And there's so many tests for so many different-
Yes.
-job opportunities in different positions-
Correct.
... and titles.
Yep.
It's really interesting if you go on their website and see all of the different exams they give, but I agree, Joe.
Yeah.
It's a great opportunity for somebody to get a good job with benefits, and, you know, if you're out there looking, get to civil service and sign up and take a test.
Yes. That's it.
Okay. Bob, you want to go next?
Sure. So the Open Space Committee is going to be presenting next Thursday's work session, so I'm not going to report on that. Recreation Advisory, and I'm going to ask Denise, because I tried to do this, to get the state to pass a law that we can use funds to maintain parks?
We're looking, I'm working with Deputy Town Attorney Amory Prudential on Town Law 277 and 274A. We presented that to Senator Anthony Palumbo, and we're looking for support from Democrats as well with regard to 20% of the land that, the land that has to be set aside for construction, construction regarding industrial and also commercial. And we're looking to put 20% of that, the amount, that normally they have to set aside the amount for parklands or playgrounds. We're looking for 20% of that to be changed over to repairs of existing parks and playgrounds, because it's great to say, "Oh, we're going to set aside an area for a playground for new capital investment," but with all these new capital investments come all these projects, these playgrounds, and you don't leave the town at any ability to keep maintaining and paying for these parks that are in desperate need. We have about 80 projects right now with, I was speaking with Ray Coyne, there, you know, there's at least 24 projects that need to be done on parks. I've given all that to Senator Palumbo, he's speaking to Monica Martinez, another senator, Democratic senator. We're looking for support for other town supervisors. It's an easy fix, it's an existing law, and we're just looking to put 20% to the, for the parks and the playgrounds for the repairs. So that, I'm in the process of working on.
That's good, because, you know, we have 42 parks, I saw photographs last night, and it's a travesty that we're allowed to build parks, we're not allowed to use money to maintain them. It's a travesty, it's, you know, counterintuitive.
It seems like it was just not thought through well enough. It's, it's an easy fix.
Yeah, agreed. So they talked about bonding. I mean, if we were to fix all 42 parks that need fixing, it would be over a million dollars easy. And so we, you know, we're discussing other things like, you know, things that the recreation department is doing, you know, to get revenue and possibly, you know, looking at all those fees and adjusting those fees appropriately, and, you know, try to utilize the, those fees to help restore, I mean, some of the stuff I saw was like, yikes. Anyway, so good group. TDR Committee, that's Transfer Development Rights, we will be meeting soon. The Wildlife Management, they're keeping me in order, that's good, taking care of the wild, no, they have it back. The Ag Advisory, trying to think of what the last thing that came up over there. Well, we took a tour, thanks to the Farm Bureau, and we visited some of the people that are on the Ag Advisory, which was a really, really great tour, and I know that's coming up in Riverhead in action, so I won't spoil that. Alternative Transportation, East End Transportation Council, I think we've met three times this month. They are adamant about fixing the pavement that was destroyed when they put the bathrooms in over in Vets Park. And also repairing the trail, and I said this the last time I reported, that's coming outside of Vets Park Memorial where the Jets are, that trail, right? Contester has come to the meeting, and what's lacking is funds, and I told them, "We're looking for funds. When funds become available, we'll be able to do that." So, but they're adamant about getting that fixed. Who else do I have? Architecture Review, you know, signage, I'm going to skip that. East End Arts, I really don't, I mean, they're doing the Mosaic Festival, to be announced when that happens. I think they're going to be doing that in concert with the bid to make it a much larger event than it's been in the past. Emerging Technologies, just to bring people up to speed on that, what we're looking at, Greg Bergman is doing a GIS- What we're looking at, Craig Bergman is doing a GIS map identifying the industrial land, the nearest hookup to water and to sewer. So that anybody looking at industrial land can see, you know, what they're in for with infrastructure. That's one of the things that we're doing. We've added a new member who is really good, really connected into NYSERDA and comes out of, is a graduate of Stony Brook University. And more updates, when that happens, I know there is a demand for data storage. I'm not going to mention who I spoke to about that, but, you know, we'll see what happens with that. What else do I have? Oh, did I actually, oh, no, I don't have that one anymore. Environmental Advisory Committee. Trying to think of what we're doing there. I've been meeting with George Bartnik. So something that we're exploring, is the old Perkins Generator Power Station on West Main Street across from Snowflake? So, been trying to get 501(c)(3)'s in there, have met with several of them. Nobody seems to have the, they want it, but they don't know what to do with it. So I spoke to PSEG about, well, what if the Rec Department could get that building? I spoke to Ray Coyne about it, that could bring in a lot of revenue. They could rent canoes out of there. And they can go either north or south.
East or west.
Oh, you call that east and west, yeah.
Yeah, definitely east and west.
Okay, east and west, all right, east and west. It's a short trip if you're going north and south.
Technically, you can go north and south.
Okay, east and west. I always look at it, that's north and that's south, anyway. So, that's looking, we're in talks, Rec is doing a two-page presentation. I think it's a really, really great idea. And I sat with George Bartnik yesterday. What are you laughing at, David? So, I sat with George Bartnik yesterday.
I'm laughing, she's crying, she's laughing so hard.
Okay. You're going to, you're taking the north-south route, by the way, okay? So, anyway. DEC has given a permit to do a handicap ramp. So we're looking to move that handicap ramp and it would be to the, either east or west, however you look at it. There's a little dam when you, when you come out. So, so right now it's on the right side of the dam. We want to put it on the left side of the dam, that, so you can go right to Granjable that way or you can take the iconic river the other way. You call it north, I don't know.
Bob, I just want to mention, I met with PSEG yesterday. And they originally agreed to a six-month no demo on the building to get something in. So we put it out to Richard Wines and members of the community. And it's now been almost a year and a half. And they said, although they don't have plans to demo it right now, it may come in the future where that has to happen. So, we need to either get moving or we're going to lose that building.
Absolutely correct. And actually, I was helped not to get a demo.
Right.
Right? So, they're waiting for the two-page report and, you know, I spoke to them, maybe three days ago. Okay, so, you know, we're in talks.
Good.
I think that, let's see, do I have any others?
Good?
Thank you, I'm good.
All right. Okay?
A couple of things. We had, working with ARVAC, great news is that we are now coming down to final stretch towards finalizing the plans for the new ambulance facility up there. ARVAC also taught a local course here for EMTs. And I believe we have approximately around 28 new EMTs that just got certification in New York State. They also will have an event.
Do we know one of those?
We do.
Yeah, okay. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I did take the course, I figure, you know. I am a volunteer with the River Fire Department, I drive the ambulances and I just, I figured it'd be better to have more knowledge.
Congratulations. It's not an easy course and it's lengthy and there's a lot of time commitment to it, so.
And they, they did, I really, I have to comment on Pat and just everybody up there, the instructors were just, they were absolutely awesome, so, really dedicated people. And they, you know, over, have overgrown this facility many, many years ago. So, getting the final plans done, it'll be out for an RFP shortly. So that's kind of exciting news on that front. I just also want to mention that, you know, EMT Week is coming up. ARVAC will be having a open house coming up shortly. And then also, they're going to be having a ceremony here in Town Hall. You know, a lot of EMTs, paramedics and police officers that over the past year have participated and have what we call CPR saves, where they have accredited for saving somebody's life. So we're going to do a nice little program here coming up in Town Hall. That's going to be on the 19th at 6:30 p.m. here in Town Hall. So the public's welcome to come and to support our EMTs, paramedics, police officers. Veterans Advisory Committee, a lot of work going on. Some will see the construction right outside the front door here. So we are currently actively moving the Garfield Langhorn Monument from Old Town Hall to New Town Hall. And that's been done at the request of the family. And so they've selected the location. I do have to, you know, thank our Building and Grounds Committee for putting the foundation in, so you see them actively working on that. But a very, very special thank you to Beconic Horn Monuments here and John Warner and Hollis Warner. And they, they are, have committed to moving the monument as, no charge, no fees, whatever, just to assist and honor Garfield Langhorn's sacrifice. So they'll be moving the monument over to New Town Hall. We want to have that all set up and completed, obviously, before Memorial Day.
Excellent.
All the Hometown Hero banners are going up. And so that's, that's going to all happen this upcoming week. So you'll see Main Street once again decorated with the Hometown Hero banners to honor all of our veterans. We also have the Memorial Day Parade coming up. So that's getting ready, as every year they do a great parade going down Main Street as well and passing multiple different cemeteries and pausing for services, so that's great. And also, we have another 26 trees being planted up at Veterans Memorial Park. And so they're going to be going in next week as well. The bathrooms have been completed now up at Veterans Memorial Park. Sidewalks are going in this coming week or next week. And then the trees will be planted around them, so it's a nice little scenic background. And we'll spread some trees over too by the pickable courts as well. So I just can't thank, the people have stepped forward. And so I think as of today now, we have, at the conclusion of this round of plantings, we'll have 50 cherry blossom trees over in Veterans Memorial Park. So just the people have come forward to honor, honor their veterans living and deceased and it's really awesome. So it's really, they're decorating the park really, really well. So that's great.
Great program. Great idea.
CAC just, you know, has its monthly meetings and just, you know, addressing, you know, different projects throughout the town, kind of standard quality of life meeting meets once a month. And they're trying to work on, they have coordinated some efforts with the county to address some concerns with some potential illegal rentals and so forth and working in conjunction with code enforcement, the police department as well. The Hispanic Development Empowering Committee has been actively working really, really great. They, they met with IT, so thank you Chip for coming down to a meeting last month. And the new website is, has the ability that you just, with one simple click, the entire website will turn into Spanish, so it makes it easy to follow. We're also going to download some of the most common forms that are in use and translate them into Spanish as well. So it makes it really, the new website's going to be incredible. That's probably coming out in another month or two. Frank Mancini's in the back, he's come forward and he's also asked for their support. And they've been putting the word out towards anybody that may have any old existing lead pipes that come into the home, that there's a program now to address them and replace them at no cost to people. So we want to get that lead out of there for safe drinking. Have a doctor on the committee, he's been phenomenal. And they've done a number of programs over the last month where they have been actively putting the word out in the Hispanic and Latino community. We did a lot of pre-cancer screenings. And so for colon cancer, breast cancer, we have other events coming up in the future. They've been coordinating incredible, so I got to thank Northwell Health, the Beconic Bay Medical Center, they've been doing some great stuff and
Free of charge, too.
Free of charge, yep. Yep, and follow-ups as well. So it's really been, that's, that's been great. And so they got, you know, a number of people that have come in and a strong crowd. So they, you know, there was a little unknown factor, how many people come, but it was great participation and also using some of the churches and their properties to really, really kind of bring people in and understand the free services that are out there. And so that's been phenomenal and may affect, due to that, saved a couple of lives too as well. Pointed out some issues to people. Traffic Safety meets here every month in the mornings. And so we've just been kind of addressing, you know, single issues around town, stop signs, speeding zones, things like that. The police have worked out really great towards, Comen Chief Frost, just excellent works being reciprocal to the questions or concerns that come forth to town. And you're going to constantly see that speed sign, mobile device moving around the town throughout, just trying to get people to slow down on certain roads. Fire Chiefs and Commissioners, we did have a number of brush fires, as you know, last year. Many of our departments also participated in the brush fires over in West Hampton Beach area. So we are doing a coordinated effort. So we have some of the departments writing letters to the state where we just want to also create our own staging areas. So if you may have been aware, over in Veterans Memorial Park, we like to get some fire hydrants up there and that helps create like a staging area as well to battle any brush fires that may come up on the North Shore. So it's a good wide-open area for trucks to gather. So we looked at what happened in West Hampton and just how the issues of where everybody's gathering and coordinating and spacing and, you know, West Hampton had 91 fired departments respond out there. So it's credible support. So we're trying to create a larger-scale emergency plan for everything. So, we've been busy.
Good. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor. Yes, first, I just want to say, Bob, your Mosaic Art Festival is June 1st, Sunday, June 1st. And also to a point you had made, Councilwoman Rothwell, about the ARVAC, we were, myself, Councilwoman Waskey and Councilwoman Kern were at the memorial for Heidi Bear and William Stone. And I got a tour of the ARVAC and kind of like crossing the Beconic. It was a two-second tour because that is a very old and very small building. Absolutely needs repair and replacement.
Replaced.
Replacement. I mean, that, like you said, that, that tour lasted two seconds because that's about as big as the building is. So that, those are just two things to point, to comment on, things that you guys were speaking about. Also, I'm also on the Parking Committee with Councilwoman Waskey. And it's just about every week that we have interviews. And we have some really great candidates that are stepping up for different.
Personnel Committee, you said parking.
Parking, well, I'm sorry, I'm on that too. Yes, I did mean personnel, but we do have.
I was thinking I didn't show up for a meeting.
We, but we're interviewing every week, it seems. And some really great candidates stepping up. And like Councilwoman Waskey said, apply. You know, take the test, take the civil servant test and apply. You know, sometimes you think, oh, I don't know, you come get the job, you never want to leave. You have a great career here. It's a beautiful building to work in, unlike the ARVAC building right now. And it's a great place, lovely people to work with. So come on down and apply. I'm also on the Parking Committee. And we're meeting next week, myself, Chief Frost, Lizzo Shaughnessy, Kevin Wood, our Parking Consultant, Dawn Thomas and I. And we're really, we're focusing on enforcement downtown with regard to the parking to help the businesses there move people out that are just parking there all day and taking away from their businesses. So that's something, I'm moving forward on the plans for the parking garage and working with the Parking Committee on that. And there will be an upcoming work session, I don't want to get ahead of that. They'll be doing more presentations about that with the support of the Parking Committee. Also, I'm on Code Revision with Councilwoman Waskey. And yes, I'd like to say that the Town Attorney's Office is doing a fantastic job. They discussed the public nuisance law that the Chapter 251 changes. And I think it's terrific and we have that in our resolution packet coming up. And I think that's a tremendous help to homeowners in residential neighborhoods with the blight and the condition with housing and just the absolute disturbance to their quality of life in their neighborhoods. I think they'll be a terrific tool and I really thank the Town Attorney's Office for that. Also, I'm on the Anti-Bias Task Force. And last month, I was at the Holocaust Memorial at the Riverhead Synagogue. And there was, it was supported there by the District Attorney's Office, our town, as well as the Anti-Bias Task Force, and that was a lovely experience. I'd also like to say that the Anti-Bias Task Force, in conjunction with the Suffolk County Police Department and the Riverhead Police Department, will be having a seminar on hate crimes. It's on June 26th. I don't have any more specific details on that just yet, but that was discussed. And the only problem is, that date was picked without talking to me. We have our, on the 26th, we have our work session all day. So I'm hoping that maybe they can shift that to the evening. But I know it is something for the public, so that's more important, that more people from the public can attend. But, so those are upcoming events with the Anti-Bias Task Force. Also, I'm on the CAP Committee. They're doing a phenomenal job. They've had two vape scams so far. And it seems as though a lot of the shops are in compliance, which is fantastic news. There are not a lot of people illegally selling flavored vapes to children or the THC that they're not allowed to sell. And I also want to mention that the CAP is having their walk June 6th. And that was a phenomenal event. I know all of us tried to attend that with all the children walking. It's a great, it's such a great opportunity to be with the youth and the children and see their exuberance on being drug-free and I'm so thrilled to be a part of that. Also, just to mention that the Park and Rec asked me to bring forward today that they are having open skate nights, open skate days with regard to the hockey rink. And the open skates are, I keep calling hockey, I'm sorry, it's the ice skating rink. He corrects me if, I'm surprised you didn't just correct me every time. It's the ice skating rink. And those, there are a couple of dates coming up. Saturday, May 17th, this is going to be from 6:15 to 7:45. Also, Tuesday, May 27th, 11:30 to 1:30. Saturday, June 14th, 6:15 to 7:45. And Friday, June 20th, 11:30 to 1:30. This is a terrific opportunity. It's free admission, you just have to pay $5 for the skates if you don't have your own skates. But again, this is something, something fantastic for our youth to do, a place to go, especially as the weather's getting warmer. You're going to really appreciate being in that ice box. As well as, I had attended, you had changed up this year Supervisor, where you had each of the different town board members go to the department head meetings. And I thank you very much for that opportunity, it was fantastic. Sitting in with all the department heads, getting a bi-weekly idea of what's happening in the town. I very much appreciated that. I've also, with regard to the Climate Smart Committee, we're actually working in conjunction with the Environmental Advisory Committee. We have brought about the Half Shell Habitat Program that the town passed, which is a great environmental opportunity for the town. It's the recycling of oyster shells that restaurants in our community are going to collect. The Rotary Club is going to then take those used oyster shells, bring them to our Youngstown municipal facility, waste facility, and cure them for a year. And Sea Talk will then remove them and be placing those used and also now cured oyster shells back into the Beconic River, which will help clean our waters, create more calcium in the water for new oysters and new clams and other types of mollusks to come and reproduce there in the water, which is great. I've also, I'm on the Senior Citizens Committee, our next meeting is May 14th. I'm still seeking a veteran, I asked the community. We're looking for a veteran senior. If they'd like to sit on the Senior Citizens Committee, we'd love to have you. Also, we're also still looking for a bilingual senior citizen to join the committee. It doesn't have to be any particular language, just a bilingual member. So we're looking for that. And we're voting on our new chairperson again on May 14th. And also, I want to bring out the fact that the senior prom is happening at the Senior Center for all the seniors. That's coming up on May 9th from 12 to 2:00 p.m. So we invite all the seniors, please, yes, tomorrow, please come. And we'd love to see you there. I'm working with the East End Task Force, I'm sorry, the Inclusion Task Force. And myself and Councilwoman Waskey had sat down with Lisa Fratell. And she was speaking to us about their, the East End Disabilities are looking for a new location in the town. Looks very exciting. They're also in the midst of reorganizing. We're going to be having a meeting where they're picking a new chair. We are going to be, we don't have them on our website. We're going to be putting them on our website as well. So that's, that's a process still in the works. And lastly, I feel like I babbled on enough, I'm sorry. I also attended the Youth Court mock trial last, last month, which is a great success. There were several seniors that did a phenomenal job that have stayed with the program for years. And at our next town board meeting on May 21st at 6:00 p.m., we're going to be recognizing those seniors. Our youth is our greatest asset in our town. And it's wonderful to see so many kids involved in so many programs for our town. And I can't wait to recognize them when you get to see these, there's about 12 young women that are just doing a great job. So that's what I have to report. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You sure you don't have anything else? I know.
If I could just add one thing, I just, I want the residents of town to, just because Councilwoman Maryfield mentioned about, about the ice rink. Keep an eye, as now as our weather gets warm, there are a lot of great events that are scheduled at the ice rink over the course of the summer. So there's a lot of, a lot of hockey, ice hockey camps and so forth. Last year, we had a lot of the New York Islanders come out and participate. There's a chance for our youth to skate with professional players. We had Marc Messier out on the ice last year. Last week, for those that might not be familiar, we had goaltender David Ayers. A lot of people don't know, there's a movie being filmed right now that will be coming out. A lot of people don't know, there's a movie being filmed right now that will be coming out soon. Um, and he was there and did like a great, uh, spent the day with the kids on the ice. But David was the Zamboni driver, um, and for the, um, Carolina Hurricanes. And the goaltender and the backup goaltender were injured. And so for the first time, being them knowing that he was in fact a goalie, uh, pulled him off the Zamboni machine, and he played for the Carolina Hurricanes in an NHL games. It's really an amazing story. I'll fast forward to the end. He wins too. So he won the game.
Well, he surfaced the ice.
I don't know. But it really is like, so he was there, and he did like camp, you know, spent the day with the kids and everything, sharing his story. Um, it, it's just a lot of great things. So please, get on the website, take a look at the ice rink, look at Pecanic Hockey Foundation and all the different players that are coming out and participate. Cause it, there's really some great stuff going on over there.
I just want to know one thing. Can you get any Mets over there?
They're not good on skates, I hear.
No, we can't, because you're too busy winning games.
Yes. Yes.
And that's a good leadway right into the next thing I'm going to say. For New York sports fans, the New York Knicks last night went up 2-0 on Boston, which is huge. So for all you New York sports fans, myself included, uh, that's really good news. Couple of quick announcements, uh, the new Riverhead Water District online portal. Uh, you can now view your account online with the option to register and pay your bill online. So check that out. Go to our website. And you can, uh, hit the link for that, and you can now pay your Water District bill online. A reminder that Sunday, this Sunday, May 11th is Mother's Day. Again, any woman in your life, uh, mom, grandma, aunt, sister, who's been a mother figure for you, please remember them and, uh, give them a hug and send them some flowers and cook them some dinner and do all those good things. So, thank you to all the moms out there. Joe is going to ask you to talk about the litter cleanup, but you already mentioned it.
I did. Yep.
So, at this point in time, we are going to close the open session. We're doing a little different today, because we have a special town board meeting. So we'll close the open session, and we will open up the town board meeting, um, for three resolutions that we have. So can I have a motion to close work session, open session?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Open session is closed.
We need to close the work session. They're going to turn the camera off, then they're going to reboot. And at 11, we'll start the town board meeting under a separate tape for them for archival purposes.
So we, we will be back at 11 o'clock in the morning for the special town board, uh, session, which is in about four minutes. And, uh, we'll take care of those three resolutions. And after that, we will then retire to executive session, uh, to complete the work session for today. So, thank you all, and we'll see you at 11 o'clock. Welcome back, everybody. We are now back from our special town board meeting. And we are going to, uh, back to our work session agenda. We have completed previously our open session. And we now are going to go into executive session to discuss the following items. Under legal, it will be potential litigation, acquisition of real property with Howard, Hurley, and charters. We have personnel matters surrounding a change in status of an employee with Howard. And we have contractual matters, matters surrounding, uh, contractual for professional services also with Howard. So at this point in time, we are going to retire to executive session. And I'll have a motion, uh, put a motion up to close work session today and retire to executive session.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are now going into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Have a great weekend. Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there. And, uh, looks like a good weather weekend. So enjoy. We'll see you next week.